Just sort of be nice, I put those motions in front of you because we can quit instead of making four motions, we can just clear everything together, okay?
Hmm? No, it's not.
We've got like another minute here, right?
Yeah.
I don't know why my voice is always like that.
No, I was laughing, Darth Vader behind me. I just hear the breathing and it sounds like Darth Vader over here.
Probably talking to him.
Yeah, everybody make sure you're talking to your microphone just the last few times and they're just very difficult because I can't hear them. Lloyd, especially you, I can't hear you. Yeah, everybody want to make sure that they're not...
You have somebody? All right, we're gonna go ahead and get this council meeting going Monday, December 14th. It's our first city council meeting. Uh, we'll call.
Tom, Lloyd.
Michelle Adams.
Lloyd Johnson.
Wayne McCorwick.
Kirby Moynihan.
Cole Yager.
Kevin Trubler.
James Moncrief.
Jeff Seltzer.
Pastor Ryan.
All right, let's break. Heavenly Father, we come before you thanking the Lord first of all for this city council and for their willingness to intentionally make you a part of their business. Lord, we recognize you as you have revealed yourself, as our maker, as our Savior, as our wisdom, and may your wisdom go forth, may you fill each of your servants here with wisdom here tonight, that justice and righteousness may go forth in each and every one of their decisions that are made here tonight. God, we thank you for your presence. You've said wherever two or more are gathered, there you are in our midst. We welcome you and we invite you to lead this meeting. To you be the honor and the glory in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Want to be just...
Would you please back to the House of Representatives, America, and to the Republican Party religious stands, One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Prove for consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Uh, Wendy, I just have a question on the payment to Sylvia. Was, did she get the flowers again from Butterfly Gardens?
Nope, she went to, uh, the Buffalo Tree Farm, bought the screws topped, or bought little trees and all the green, for the tree pots, yep.
Okay.
She did it while I was home with COVID because I wasn't here to get the stuff, so she just did it and we reimbursed her.
Okay. All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Nothing for open forum? Truth and taxation public hearing?
I make a motion to close the regular city council meeting and open the truth and taxation public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Anybody do second? That was Tom.
So just a quick overview, um, it's exactly the same as what it was on November 30th at the workshop, we didn't change anything.
Did you in the audience have any questions? How long do we have to keep it open, or can we just...
Supposed to be half an hour.
Well, that was the, uh, Court of Appeals, yeah. I don't know if there's any time limit for truth and taxation.
No, we can, we can open.
Yeah, we can go ahead, yeah, yes, all right.
Motion to close the truth and taxation public hearing and open the regular city council meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're back open to Wright County, is not here unless Kevin, you got anything before? No?
If you have any questions, there's something I might be able to do.
Okay. City council?
We have a resolution.
What is that? Oh, the taxation one, yeah. We need a motion then to, uh, I'll make a motion to, for, uh, 2020-36, authorize a year 2021 final levy and budget.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, now city council.
All right, the council meeting, the canvas board meeting and the special council meeting last month.
Council meeting, special council meeting.
Council meeting, election certification meeting and special council.
Council meeting and special council.
Council meeting and a special council.
All right, Kevin?
So I have most on the agenda, so I'm sorry. Uh, so first thing is the activity report for November, um, another very busy month for us in November, um, we've, as of today, we've surpassed our, um, record for calls in a year. We're averaging about, going on a call about every 30 hours right now is our average. Uh, so it's been a very busy year for us, um, in many fronts unfortunately, so, uh, unless there's any questions on the activity report.
Is that more fire or medical?
It's, yeah, both of them are up. We always stay consistent, our medicals usually take up 48% of our call load, so that's been historic for many years, so. Um, next thing that I wanted to bring up and get your guys' thoughts, inputs and hopefully a motion is, uh, I'd like to request some kind of stipend for firefighters who've served all through this crazy 2020 year. Uh, there's a lot that goes through our minds and hearts and, um, family with the COVID pandemic and, uh, our call load volume has gone up and everything like that, so, um, with a stipend, we may go over budget on our, um, wages and salary line item, but in the historic past, we've never spent the whole lot of it either, so money's there, um, without an issue. Um, I would personally like to see a stipend of $500, but that's open for discussion changing or, um, not doing one off, so I'll leave that up to you guys, but I would be a motion for it to be in, uh, paychecks for this year.
How many firefighters do you have, Kevin?
Right now, uh, I would be getting this, 19.
So you're looking at 9,500, and I don't know if that even puts you over budget.
Depends on the work calls.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the only way, otherwise you wouldn't even...
We would be over budget by a couple thousand bucks at most, is what it adds up.
Just on, just on the payroll part, is everything else here else under budget?
Yeah. Yep.
Would it be, uh, the same amount for everyone, or would it be like certain percentages of calls get more, or?
No, this would be, uh, just a blanket stipend.
Flat mine?
Yeah, this would be flat mine across the board, um, they're paid for how many calls and trainings they go to already, so this would just be a, um, thank you for the hard work and bringing all the nasty stuff home and always having, uh, it in the back of our minds that, oh, is this gonna be the one that does have the COVID, or are we gonna get something from this one? It's just been a lot more heightened and, uh, you know, $500 isn't that much, but it's something and shows appreciation, I think.
Mayor, members of the council, um... Aye. Thank you. The Minnesota Attorney General, um, has held, um, with several attorney generals' opinions that public employers cannot pay end of the year, uh, bonuses unless there's a previous agreement in place. Another option would be to adopt an employee recognition program and fund or recognize firefighters in that way. Uh, the idea behind the no, uh, bonuses that aren't previously agreed to is that the work has already been, um, contracted for, and so that bonus is essentially a gift. But the city could adopt an employee, uh, recognition program and achieve a similar result. But that, the council is...
When you say employee though, would that consist of firefighters and staff employees?
You can specify, couldn't you?
Yeah. Is that what we would have to do? I mean, because you're saying that put this in place for employee recognition, so the staff is also the employees, so would that also be?
You could, you could put in your program guidelines how that would work.
Okay. Do you, James got a sample of anything like that?
I don't have a sample, I looked on our system at work today, um, I can contact, but usually they, um, are kind of clearing house for sample orders.
And then Kevin, a question for you, so we could adopt this at the January meeting, is that okay as far as payroll goes, or no? No?
No, my guys will be on my case on January 1st at 1:00 AM. So I usually get the payroll to Wendy on the 2nd.
There must be a way that we can just limit it to the fire department.
Well, right, well, we can't even give it to the fire department because we don't have that, we can't do that, that's what he just said.
Or could be a recognition for the fire department.
Yeah, but you still have to, you have to adopt...
Not to adopt the resolution, no.
You have to adopt the recognition program and it hasn't been adopted, so that's why you can't do it yet, because it hasn't been adopted.
So we would need a resolution stating that before we can do it, is that what I'm understanding?
We'd need to have a written, written...
Correct.
Can it be, I suppose, can it be done, um, we're not really gonna have a second council meeting, but could it be done electronically somehow to all the council, or does, I suppose you'd have to be public though? Um, could it be, could you hold a special council meeting like on the 28th or something, that 4 o'clock in the afternoon, just by phone and do it? Can you do it that way or not?
Could we have it in place by then, getting the research, getting it done?
Yeah, I don't know how fast we would be able to get it.
I think we probably could get it in that timeframe.
Because if the league has a canned program for you to go, we just have to put in our information, correct?
Well, yeah, we have to adapt to the state's circumstances.
Yeah, they respond pretty quick.
From hearing that, I could probably have typed up tomorrow, so without even having a sample, I know exactly what you're saying with it, so, kind of, yeah.
Are you going to just contact the league and they would email you an order?
So we do have something on our agenda now? It's okay for me to...
Well, we can just do it by, I mean, we would have to meet...
We could do a Zoom meeting, just record a Zoom meeting.
Because you still have your phone company, right?
Yeah, we, we'd be better off doing it on Zoom, you know, that way you've got a video capture of the thing.
Okay, so we need to decide, do we want James to, I mean, he can have that to me pretty quickly, get that from the league. He used to work with their research department, so he'll be able to get that pretty quickly by then.
Hopefully, yeah.
No pressure, people. Okay, so we're gonna get meetings later, right, or cancel, we're gonna...
We'll change it.
Sorry.
You should be...
Uh, I know. Uh, emergency management updates, um, I don't really have anything, um, status quo since the, our last workshop, I believe, um, building a lot of emails and questions and stuff from city businesses, city residents, as I have been, but that's pretty much all I have for that unless there's any specific questions or...
Unless I can keep fighting for the accurate... Wayne? It's, it's, it's just hard to continue to say no when people see it every other town, you know?
I was talking about with two people.
I know, but it's getting done in...
I know, but Buffalo has 20 some people in their public works department.
Three.
That are working.
They, they're only rotating it.
Their public works department in Buffalo, they've got all their electrical people, all their water, sewer, I mean, theirs are all separate. Our, we have one person that's here basically for our street department, because the other guy's watering sewer. That one person can't put it up.
Well, you couldn't assist them? So then we do?
Well, we're getting, we're getting too close to it.
I was gonna say, we're supposed to be keeping apart and then riding separate trucks, so...
I know, well, we'll just forget it, because I don't know how everybody else did it, because they just put up another rink in Buffalo over the weekend, so...
Who put it up on the weekend?
The couple staff members. I sent you the text.
Then what, I saw that.
So, I don't know.
They worked on a weekend and put up an ice rink?
Well, I just, what did I say? I sent it to you guys and they were thanking them for putting up a rink, um, probably Friday, we have it, that it's getting up and getting ready to go. Yep. How are the lights on that? Sorry to take over here, Kevin, sorry.
All the firefighters are on, having trouble keeping the lights. Could we make a decision kind of late in the season?
You think? Yeah. And the excavator?
We're gonna do that.
You Googled it?
Well, we figured that out.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Kevin.
Um, next thing I have is authorized replacement of large diameter check valve in the fire station. Um, the initial quote that I got is right around $9,000, um, so it's a large check valve on our west, or on our east wall there, um, that used to connect essentially directly into the well.
Is it check valve or is it the back foot of the valve?
Whatever an RPZ is.
No, that's what, that's what it's got to be, because the league's had it once, well, yeah, is it replaced that? Because that has to be in there.
Yep, yeah, it's gonna stay there, I have one option to clean it, one option to rebuild it, one option to replace it, uh, cleaning and rebuilding may not take care of the issues, so.
Because it had a lot of sand and it was coming out of that tower.
So we're hoping that with the well not being there anymore, now is probably the time to try and get it fixed and tough deck, so.
And that has to be serviced once a year.
Yeah. That's what I hear.
It's also 25 years old.
It is.
It's supposed to have it serviced once a year. Have you packed it? Yep, they come in, a guy comes in, hooks gauges up, give it the check valve, pressure points and...
Need a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion on that one.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve our replacement of large check valve in the fire station, uh, in the...
Do you think I can exceed nine grad?
Uh, I would, I would just say to replace.
To replace it.
To replace it. I'm gonna, I've been getting multiple bids on it and stuff, so.
And Lloyd, just second. All right, Tom?
Aye.
About I, Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
All right, motion passes five zero.
And then last thing, you kind of already approved it, but we took on our two new firefighters, Matt Menard is back and then Kate Scootinbeck is also now on the fire department effective December 3rd, so we want to formally approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve Matt Menard and Kate Scootinbeck to the fire department.
Second.
Uh, Nicole?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Aye.
About I and Tom?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, Park and Rock has no updates, we have no meeting.
EDA, you know, our attempt to acquire an Aldi in town has met with...
Landing zoning to 40 EDA.
What's that?
Landing zoning with 40 EDA.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
The first thing I just put a notice in the packet for you, we're going to be having a public hearing on Wednesday, July 3rd, January 13th, um, we're going to be talking about a condition to use permit for a property located at 345 Garfield Avenue, they wanted to put up in this accessory building. So that will be on there, and then, um, you need to consider the application for Mr. Charles Smallwood, um, I made a motion if you would like to bring back other than...
Uh, I got something on that one. So Mr. Smallwood was on planning and zoning multiple times and had left up multiple times, um, along with three others just a few years back. He left because of the firing of Dale Powers, and he was upset with me over that, so, um, I would make a recommendation, because he's come and gone so many different times, he's not a good candidate, nice guy, very knowledgeable, but he keeps leaving the city up and on his fur. He's been on planning zoning twice. He was on planning zoning with Catherine.
Yeah.
And he said no to Catherine, who's also very knowledgeable, and, um, and again, Chuck, Chuck left because of the firing of Dale, and he was good friends with Dale, so I would make a recommendation not to do that.
I'd like to add a little bit to that, um, he not only quit, but then he talked to other people and they also quit in other departments. And I don't think that that's good for the city, I don't care who he is.
Yeah, they got completely short.
That's a true story, you know, that, because I talked to people that stayed and they said that they were told that they should quit too.
We need to quit.
Rue quit, Chuck quit, and...
Got another guy in, I don't really know who's...
He lives around a skiing boat and I can't remember his name, you talk to your mom about quitting, but she stayed with it, and Sylvia, he tried to convince Sylvia to quit and she obviously stayed, and that was all that was on the board at that time, was the three of them, right?
Must have been four.
Catherine? No. I think Mike's down over there, I don't know. I don't know if Michael's or not, was he? Yeah.
But anyway, it's, it's not a very...
No, it was buried, it was buried, he tried to get buried and quit, who was also, who was on Park and Rock, and Chuck was also, Chuck and Rue were also on Park and Rock and they left us with nobody because of the firing of Dale Powers. So that is not a good representation to the city, but because that's all even more people to decide that.
Well, one thing that I would like, is I, I'd like for him to, I mean, to show up and plead his case, so we'll be able to table this until he can show up and then he can give his side of stuff as well. We did it when Catherine applied, we denied her, we did it to her face, she was sitting right there when we did it, so I mean, if we're to deny Chuck, I'd like to do it to his face as well.
I, you could do that, that's fine, but just know that, um, he did not attend a meeting tonight, so.
So that just shows he has no commitment to the city?
No, I, I don't think... I know, I don't think he, I don't think he was real thrilled about being in...
Health wise?
Yeah.
I don't think he throws out a lot of...
So understandable on that then, what are we gonna do till January? Because the health stuff ain't gonna go anywhere? You know? So...
You could make a motion to table it.
Okay, I'll, uh, make a motion to table it until he can attend a council meeting.
I'll second it. I'll, uh, Tom?
Aye.
Nicole? Aye. Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
No.
I'm gonna table it. Well, I'm gonna say no, because I'm, no, but motion passes three to two. Okay, Tom.
Okay, EDA, uh, as you all know by now that our attempt to acquire an Aldi in town has met with defeat, um, Jaleen Fawcett, who's the director of the Wright County Economic Development Partnership, and the EDA have been working with Aldi and finally we got a response back from the broker at Aldi saying that, uh, the city of Montrose does not meet the population density, nor the traffic flow demographics at this time, so, uh, word is that they're looking at Delano or Buffalo to put a store in.
Because it's competing with big businesses, so...
Yeah, that's, that's my whole point, so.
I think we should try again come the beginning of the year again as well, I mean, i- i- anything, even if it's just her reaching out to them again, or if it's doing a Zoom meeting with someone in their public relations office, but, I mean, do they really want to go compete with, I mean, Coburn's actually loved in Delano, I mean, they have people there will never stop going there, they love Coburn's because they're so involved in the community.
Right, you have the new Zip trip, which is practically a shopping, you know, a grocery store, um, now, so if that's two, and then Buffalo, I mean, you've got the cup, you've got the Super Walmart.
Target, there's also talks that Coburn's is wanting to go back into Buffalo again, so...
Journal press, Coburn's is coming back.
So, I mean, they, they want to go compete with all these different stores and they can come here and have just free range of Highway 12 from Delano to Howard Lake, you know, Howard Lake does, but it's more expensive stuff that's there.
Dollar General's on the downwind, so...
Yeah, by the QuickTrip I heard, right?
Yeah.
People were real enthused about that, and they already got traffic problems as well.
Yeah.
Right.
Somebody commented on the community page on Delano the other day, though, that the city of Delano has a knock and peak clause so that no other grocery store can come in. They made that agreement with Coburn's.
Then how do they approve the Dollar General? That, well, that's not a grocery store.
Yeah, I guess, you know, fresh.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm not saying we're, we're driving a stick in its heart, it's just that its heart needs to slow down a quick bit, yeah, okay, let's put it that way.
So what, what did they say for the population stipulation there?
Well, you know, they're looking at 5,000 plus and we're, you know, we're short by a couple thousand people, and traffic flow is the big, big deal. They're looking at 20, it was 22,000 or 23,000 vehicles per day, and we're at like 11.5.
Really?
Yeah.
God, it seemed like...
Now, that was the last, last time they monitored, now, monitoring it now with COVID and some people not going into work probably wouldn't be a time when we'd do it again.
When was the last time it was monitored? That was...
What was it?
Eight.
It was, uh, it was, uh, I've got that in my notes, I think it was, uh, 18.
Eighteen, really, that late?
Yeah, it was 2018, because it had to do with the, uh, Highway 12 project.
Hmm, that was lovely.
They, they did it at the intersections, uh, you know, up in front of Bob's and then, uh, south of the, of US 12 and then on either side of County 12, so...
We should petition Coburn's to come here and set up back in Buffalo.
Yeah.
Wait to stop that, I'm...
Well, they have a job, yeah.
No, but it's, it's pretty well within...
Well, then we have, a developer who's interested in making an offer to purchase the land known as the Preserve, um, will be negotiating that purchase contract here in closed session back in the meeting, so, uh, Deb and Dan have been working with a developer to develop a plat for that property, so, and then there's another developer that's interested in the plot of land, uh, north Emerson and Aspen, north of town here, uh, so once again, they're discussing, Deb and Dan are discussing that further with the developer. So, you know, if anything, we'll get a few more rooftops in the area, um, which may help us get, get an Aldi or whatever, you know?
Deb, before you guys go much further with that one north, up near Regional Park, will you get in touch with Justin or have Dan get in touch with Justin? Because I don't know if that green ring corridor has been recorded yet.
I think, yeah, I think they already talked to Justin.
About the green ring corridor, make sure we get that, uh, recorded before that sale goes through.
And that's it?
All right. Wayne?
How close is this closed now for a year? I'll be hearing complaints.
Will you?
Yeah, there's, there's...
Yeah, I had one over the week, and you let me have it.
So...
It is closed.
What's the best way, I mean, since it's, well, hopefully it snows sometime here soon, but, um, if people are still cleaning up, please, what's the best way for them to, do they have to call City Hall and make an appointment?
Well, they can, but it's getting to be a real pain because they can't... They can, but it's getting to be a real thing because they can't do it and we can do it and.
Buffalo closed theirs too. There is none.
I know we said November first.
Right. And we, we left.
They need to left it till.
Actually.
Maybe November.
Closed it last week, but put a sign on it today that it's closed.
Because I had people ask me if they could possibly bring their stuff over here because Buffalo and Rocker Township is closed as a no sorry.
And that's what we're.
Everybody's closed already.
Well, actually, last Wednesday, sir, guy knocked on the door and I went and threw it and it was nice enough to dry out with him and opened it up for him, so.
We're doing that all last week, you know, for the people finishing up, so. That worked out. Well, then that, everything else is running smooth so far. Of course, the skating won't be done. But we do get some spare talent. We'll try to get that.
If, if there's a way to figure it out, I think it'd be a good idea to do it.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Outside with mass if they can figure it out.
Yep, yep. That would be much appreciated by not only us but all of our residents. So.
That's gonna be 45 a week outside.
Yeah, it's supposed to be up and down temperatures the next couple of weeks with no snow.
I have kids skating on my pond right now and that's just not cool yet. I don't, like, no, not yet. Yep, so.
Yeah, they had a truck open on Red Lake the size of.
Yep. Full fish on.
Yeah, why are we having full fish? I was out there in the truck.
They call them.
So somebody's always got to be.
City stuff. Yeah, it's, it's the, the city.
The city people drive up and think, wow, I'm full fishing.
All right. Anything else?
Let you do it. Let's have you go to the other questions.
All right. No new, no old business, no new business.
Um, they're both, the resolutions on 2020 dash 37 and 38, 20, uh, 37 is for our water access charge. 38 is for our sewer access charge. These are the charges that we add to the building permits that the builders pay for. It's our second line fees that we, we increase by a hundred dollars every year to make sure that we stay on top of everything and have money in there in case we need to expand or any kind of major repairs. We used, we used the, um, part of that fund when we redid the, when we cleaned out the wastewater plant on the sludge because Waverly puts money in there too and they use our plants, so.
We're all aware of it.
This is right now.
It's, it's done. It's sitting there drying.
Okay.
It'll dry again for the first part of next year. And then we have to figure a way to haul it to landfill.
Yeah.
And we'll get some bids on that. I'm not volunteering my truck.
What did Kirby say? He wants to ride along with me?
That's right.
In the resolution, water is at 2,600, reported 27. And sewer access charge is at 54, reported 55. The part that is wastewater, 600 is the wastewater plant and 3,900 is our sanitary sewer system, all of our pipes in the ground.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2020 dash 37.
Second.
All right, Nicole. All right, how about I, Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2020 dash 38.
Second.
All right, Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
Nicole. All right, I'll, I'll, motion passes five zero.
Uh, can I, there's not another listed under here, but can I add something briefly just while we're on the conversation of resolutions and whatever? Uh, can you guys put out a flyer for vacant council seats starting in January? I know that they're working on it, but.
Jess is already, we, we finalized such a date yesterday. We're gonna take applications. We can't, we have to establish the vacancy first. And James was nice enough to give me a resolution. We'll do that in January. And then we'll start taking applications. Flyer is done. It's gonna go in the newsletter. The application is done. I updated it today. And Jess is gonna start putting it out there already because the newsletter will go up before the January 11th meeting. We'll establish a vacancy. We're gonna take applications until Friday, January 22nd. I don't want to give them too much time because then people set aside or forget about it. So we'll talk about the January 11th meeting, take them until the 22nd. And then I put on there that we will contact them regarding the next step in the process.
So that's two weeks, right?
Yep.
Oh, that's longer than we've given before. It was a week and following week it was, it was said that they were ready, but then it's also.
This will give us plenty of time to have it ready for the next.
Right, okay. Uh, upcoming meetings. We are putting back on a special council meeting on the 28th. What time do I do that?
For the.
Oh, you put that back, huh?
Yeah, because we have to approve Kevin's stuff.
They're actually gonna make a special city council meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, there might be a, uh, Park and Rec, January 7th, uh, regular council, January 11th will continue. Um, I mean, the zoning should be the 13th of January, EDA should be the 19th, and special council 23rd. And anything else?
Uh, well, I for one like to acknowledge all the public works, the fire department, the emergency management director and the city staffers for how they've handled all this pandemic stuff this year. It's been really crazy the last nine months and I think that you guys have handled it really well. And I also would like to thank Michelle and Lloyd for the eight years that they've put on the city council the last almost decade. So I appreciate what you guys have done for the city.
Anyone else? All right. I know you're looking at it. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to close the regular city council meeting and go into closed session in accordance with Minnesota State Statute 13D point zero five to develop or consider offers, counter offers for the purchase or sale of property.